Do you want to take them first in the presentations? So we can change the agendas, because we don't have to wait the whole time. We've got those public hearings and action on here.
I guess I could. I'll ask the council.
Welcome to our meeting. The date is June 10, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. Now, I ask you to all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The deputy city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Connolly.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak will be absent. Councilmember Lanfair.
Present and happy to be here.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. We're happy to have you, Mr. Lanfair. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Sonia Cisneros, the deputy city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city attorney, Patrick Brown, the assistant city attorney, chief financial officer, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, Keith Kurtz, the public works director, and Matthew Gleason, the finance director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Council members, do you wish to remove any of the items from tonight's consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about 7B, so I'd like it removed.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair. 7B is removed. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking.
Thank you, Mayor Steele. And, yeah, I know I can go ahead and sign up beforehand, just as soon if I can, just address you publicly. I'd like to potentially speak on item 9A, which is the improvements in funding for improvements at State Fair and Foner Park campus. And then the second, about the only way I could think with the mayor's discretion to address you is to turn in a request for future agenda items form with questioning two topics. One is the ability for the council's consideration for the public to comment on non-agenda items. And in particularly, why I say that is I would like to have the policy decision addressed regarding the cemetery policy on confiscation of certain items on the cemetery. I think that may be problematic, and I'd like to go ahead and make note of that request.
And are you also going to fill out the future agenda items form?
Yes, sir. I have that along with the documentation on the placard that's posted at the cemetery.
Mr. Vaverechek, would you please hand those to the city attorney, so we have them?
Roger. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, we have a lot of people here tonight on the agenda item 9A, the presentation on the Nebraska State Fair Heartland Event Center parking lot lighting improvements, anticipated funding request. Given the number of people here, would the council members have any problem with me moving this up right after the consent agenda, so they do not waste their time needlessly listening to other things, as I'm looking from right to left? That's okay, then. After we do the consent agenda and before the public hearings, we will hear from the State Fair people. I would just like to say regarding the State Fair contingent, we have a couple who came from quite a ways tonight to be with us. State Board member Boyd Strope from O'Neill, Holt County, Nebraska, and state board member Tom Shellpepper from Stanton, Stanton County, Nebraska. Welcome, gentlemen. Welcome to all of you. The first item on our agenda is recognizing Paul Leeper for 32 years of service on the Grand Island Civil Service Commission. And for those of you who may not know, and those of you watching at home, the Civil Service Commission plays a vital role in maintaining the integrity and fairness of the city's public safety system. The commission is composed of three community members, each appointed by the mayor to serve six-year terms. So, tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize an individual who has quietly but powerfully shaped the integrity of our public safety system for more than three decades. Civil Service Commission Chairman Paul Leeper has served the city of Grand Island for an incredible 32 years and counting. His commitment to fairness, transparency, and upholding the high standards of our civil service process has left a lasting mark. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Leeper's wife, Sue, his daughter Jenna, her husband Daniel, and Aspen, their daughter. Welcome to all of you. Let's be honest about honoring Paul tonight, because he has accomplished something we never thought was possible, getting both Paul and former police chief Steve Lampkin to attend the city council meeting at the same time. That is noteworthy, ladies and gentlemen. This alone deserves a round of applause. Thank you. Paul, on behalf of our city, our leadership, and our public safety teams, thank you for your unwavering service, your wisdom, and your dedication to Grand Island. The city clerk, Jill Grenier, and I will meet you at the main podium to present you with a certificate of appreciation and a pin of the city of Grand Island. Mrs. Grenier? Mr. Leeper, it is my honor to present to you this certificate of recognition awarded to Paul Leeper for 32 years of service on the Grand Island Civil Service Commission, signed by me as mayor and Jill Grenier as city clerk. And I'd appreciate a few words if you would be so kind.
Not much of a public speaker. Shy in most respects, but I've learned a lot. It's been quite a ride. Met a lot of good people. I'll remember. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it. I really do. I don't know how I lasted this long, but it was fun.
We appreciate your service, sir. And Chief Lampkin, thank you for bringing this to my attention. Things like this deserve to be recognized. Thank you. Our next presentation is 6B, update on Nebraska LB 707, presented by Mrs. Fisk, followed by Mrs. McAlune. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'm here to provide you an update on a recent act of the Nebraska legislature called LB 707. This legislative bill updated most of the relevant statutes related to our Good Life District. So, the statute, if you read it, is attached to, or the LB is attached to your council packet, is extensive. One thing I'll note, if you take a chance to review it in its entirety, is a lot of the provisions don't apply to Grand Island. There are provisions that apply to the city of Omaha or to some other jurisdictions that don't necessarily apply. So, as you pour into it a bit, if you see provisions in there that cause you concern, please feel free to reach out and touch base with either Ms. McAlune or myself to see if they even apply to Grand Island. As far as the changes within that bill that do apply to Grand Island, there are quite a few, some of minor significance, some of larger significance. The first and probably biggest change is a change in the funding formula and the funding processes for the Good Life District. As you're aware, when we passed the Good Life District ordinance, we created the Good Life District occupation tax after the state had reduced its sales tax by 2.75%. We simply replaced that with our own tax. Starting October 1st, that provision is going to be sunsetted by the legislature, and the state sales tax will return back to its prior place. Instead, what the state will do is take that 2.75% and allocate it differently. They will handle that money in the collections. At that point in time, they'll allow us to receive up to $5 million in that 2.75% collected from existing businesses within the Good Life District, and then a portion of the sales taxes generated by new businesses. Prior to this change, it was anticipated that our Good Life District tax revenue would be approximately $7.5 million. This will see a reduction down to that $5 million line, and then any money above $5 million will be dependent on what is considered a new or relocated business within the district. So that is probably the first and biggest change this LB brings to Grand Island, is it changes the amount of money available for our project. Within the act are some fairly complicated formulas and definitions for what is and isn't a new business, what is and isn't relocated, some rebating processes, some reporting processes. But in its essence, for you, that's the biggest change. You'll see us come back to you probably end of July to amend our program ordinance to reflect the removal of that occupation tax in this new funding formula. So, we'll work to get that in place before that October 1st transition to the state handling that. We don't want to go too early and cause confusion as to what retailers are supposed to do during the summer. We also don't want to wait too late and not give them very much notice, so we're going to try to thread that needle this summer. The other, the statute also creates some changes and some definitions, some reporting requirements, what it will and won't consider new development costs. There were some terms, as you're aware, in the original statute that weren't particularly clear, what would and wouldn't count for reporting. One significant thing to note is it's created a bit of a split in those definitions for what counts for the city if we expend it versus what a private developer can count. One of the biggest impact places there is a renewed focus for private applicants or developers on revenue generating expenditures. For a private developer, as opposed to the city, no more than 20% of the money they spend can be on non-revenue producing items. Kind of reaffirming that goal you already have in your program ordinance, that every Good Life District dollar we spend will generate enough money to replace it. This creates a definitive benchmark, though. So that will shift and change what anybody making application can and can't consider there. It also, as far as Grand Island goes, removed a provision that previously would have allowed us to expand and change the boundaries of the district a little bit easier. After this LB, we cannot add property to the Good Life District anymore. We can remove it, and it did change that removal process, but it, for all intents and purposes, has fixed the boundaries of the Good Life District and removed some of that flexibility we had had previously. It also creates a couple of other minor changes, especially for city-focused projects. It clarifies a lot what we can do, what exceptions we have that aren't available to a private developer. So it will change procedurally how that money gets spent, what is available for bonding. It will make certain structures to spending more advantageous to the city, but doesn't repeal the program, lets it keep going, just makes those changes. As far as the next steps for you go, you'll see us come back to you again in July with an ordinance changing that funding formula, so that way the money then goes to the state and comes back to us. We'll present to you some changes to reflect what is and isn't an eligible expense for a private developer as opposed to the city, because that will require a bit of a split in our program ordinance. It will also probably shift kind of our current plans. Of course, as the bonding authority changes, the difference between $5 million and $7.5 million changes how much money we can obtain in bond proceeds for any project. It also changes how that money can be spent, what counts there. So I would anticipate seeing some changes in all of our project ideas to reflect those available funds, whether that is a private developer having to course correct to adjust to those new spending caps, or us having to course correct to make sure we capture as much of that revenue as possible by being in some of those driver's seats as it pertains to what we can count as an expense that a developer can't. And then I would tell you that the one big thing it does change for you is if there were any plans or hopes amongst council to change and add property to that boundary, the legislature has kind of closed that door for you. Otherwise, I won't bore you with reading this big gigantic packet of stuff. If you have any particular questions about the bill, let me know. And I think Ms. McAlune's prepared to answer some of those questions. She's been pretty involved in that legislative process, so she may know a little bit more than I do on some of these issues, but whatever you have, we'll give it our shot.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. And now, Mrs. McAlune, would you please present?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, in addition to the explanation of what's in the new law that city attorney Fisk has provided, Mayor Steele's asked that I provide an update on a few related topics. The first is where has the administration left off with Woodsonia? As you may recall, Woodsonia filed an application for Good Life District Economic Development Program funding in January with the city. Community Development requested additional information. Information was exchanged, and additional documents were provided by Woodsonia to Chad Nabadi. Ms. Fisk and our bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell, were working through Woodsonia's legal team to develop the language of a memorandum of understanding that would accompany the Good Life District Economic Development application that they had submitted, guide our review, your approval. So that process was going on. However, during the legislative session, we were meeting, talking regularly to our lobbyist, who was also talking with Woodsonia's lobbyist. One of Woodsonia's concerns with any conveyed to our lobbyists was that any changes to the Good Life District laws could impact negatively the viability of the Grand Island Good Life District. During the legislative session, we were given the opportunity, the city was given the opportunity to meet with the chair of the revenue committee, Senator Von Gillern. We had that meeting. He was very helpful and open about his intent and the governor's intent in terms of changing the law, but we stated our support for continuation of the Good Life District Economic Development Program and the existence of the districts themselves, and we requested that the legislative updates would simply provide clarity to the existing law, not restrict or limit the authority that we were given, especially in light of the significant voter support for the Good Life District in Grand Island. So, again, Senator Von Gillern was quite helpful in that regard. He did provide advice during that meeting that, in his opinion, no city, including Grand Island, should move forward with executing an agreement, any type of a contract or approving an application while the legislation was pending. We internally had already had that discussion that, in light of all the changes that we were anticipating, we didn't anticipate bringing any final document to the city council until we had, until the unicameral session had closed. So that's where we stood in terms of negotiations with Woodsonia. As of today, I reached out to Gilmore and Bell. They advised that Woodsonia's attorney said that they're still studying the law and the changes and evaluating the impact of the legislative changes on their pro formas, their plans, their proposal. So they are still considering that. What we as a city are looking for in terms of guidance tonight from the city council is information and guidance from you on what our options are for moving forward. So obviously, the first step is, as Ms. Fisk explained, it's to update the city code so that it conforms to the newly changed state law. As she said, we'll plan to present that to the city council at a July meeting. She said the last meeting in July, I would love to go get it done by the first meeting in July, because we're already two years into this process. And frankly, my desire is that the city be able to move forward as quickly as possible so that we don't run into another legislative session, which, believe it or not, is a mere nine months away. So, at the same time that we'll be reviewing that, as I noted, Woodsonia is evaluating that, we plan to seek confirmation from them of their intentions. So once they've completed their evaluation, what do they intend to do? Do they intend to amend their existing pending application? Obviously, it needs to conform to changes in state law. We can do that, as Fisk and I have discussed it. We don't believe that it would trigger any type of a new application fee on their part or anything. We'd simply let them conform their application to current law. However, as they conveyed during the legislative session, they may be making another decision. So we would be seeking guidance from them as to what that is. A key question for you is how long do you want us to wait for that decision? So hold off on any feedback on that until I get through the rest of this, because the other things that the city could do, rather than inviting Woodsonia to submit an amended application, is our current Economic Development Program statute, city code, allows for the city to conduct an RFP process for the property it owns. So we could do that. We could do that in a number of different forms. One would be to do a sports complex with a designated amount of housing, given the new limitation on spending, that 20% cap on non-revenue producing expenditures. That includes housing. So, and that was actually Senator Von Gillern expressed to us that that was their intent, the legislature's intent was to make sure that the housing was limited. We could do an RFP for just the sports complex. As you recall, that's the transformational project that the voters were asked to consider us moving forward with through the funding mechanism. We still have that funding mechanism, but as Carrie explained, the funding dollars are limited. I do want to clarify, the $5 million cap applies only to the amount of revenue we can receive from existing retail sales. So retail businesses that existed as of the date of formation of the Grand Island Good Life District, June 4th, 2024, we just passed the one-year anniversary. All new retail sales from that date forward are split equally between the state and the city, 50/50. So of that 2.75%. So it is, there will be a deduction. The state, obviously, if they're going to collect that money, they're going to be charging us right now their standard 3% fee for processing that. So we need to have our specialists look at that and evaluate how much money that is. And then finally, the other type of RFP we could do that we've been envisioning would be the sports complex and separating out, doing an RFP for just sports complex, while at the same time, you could choose to do an RFP for housing only. You could also choose to defer the housing. The city owns that land. We could have it, we could wait until a developer approaches us with an idea. There's just a number of things to do with it, but given the limitations, we definitely do need to unlink the large amount of housing from the transformational sports complex. Meanwhile, we'll continue to work with our finance team to evaluate that funding stream, given that new cap of $5 million on existing retail sales. Our financial advisors have already indicated that any type of financing based on future tax revenue, the new tax revenue, that would have to wait until we had some real data on actual sales and what that generated. It's just too speculative at this time for the city to be able to get good financing terms, i.e. good interest rates, on that type of revenue. But we can work with the $5 million that we know we're going to generate. And then, excuse me, the city, the chief financial officer, Mr. Brown and myself, have been talking to other jurisdictions about what their experiences are with similarly sized sports complexes, and we've gotten some great feedback on things, pitfalls and opportunities, things that they've learned from going through the process themselves. Out of that, we are, based on what we've heard so far, we're evaluating whether it makes sense to do an update of the feasibility study and the retail sales tax study. Those were done in 2022, and they were done under a very different legal scheme, right? Very different formation for how the funding would flow. So those are things we're looking at and evaluating, and we're reaching out for all the free advice we've been able to get from other jurisdictions and from local experts. So at this time, we are seeking city council input and guidance on the next steps, what your desired outcomes are for how we move forward, the timing for that. What are your thoughts?
Mr. Sheard will lead off with you.
Thank you. The state giveth, the state taketh away, which is very frustrating. You mentioned significant voter support. It was significant. I'm curious, I have a slew of questions, as you would expect. Will the state refund the cost of the election that we did, that they required us to do, and the money that was spent to do what they told us we had to do to follow their rules?
There is no provision in this law to do that.
Originally, you could recoup the cost of the election as part of Good Life Funds, right?
We can still pay for the cost of that election from the Good Life District occupation tax funds that we have received. Matter of fact, I think we've already charged it against the account.
The 20% that is capped at non-revenue producing, you mentioned that housing is considered part of that 20%. We had talked at various times about using Good Life Funds as incentives, as support for the Good Life District in other ways. Perhaps if we needed to gift land, or if there was support for the area, if it required us to increase public safety, we might have to spend Good Life money on that. That was one of the things that was considered a potential use of that money. Obviously, unless we're, I saw chief earlier, unless we're going to have a lot of speeding tickets... tickets, that's not revenue-producing that we're talking about. So would we still be able to do that?
So some of those splits change on whether it is us as a city spending the money or if it's a private developer spending the money. Those caps on non-revenue producing largely apply to a private developer. The city still retains a lot of those infrastructure sort of spending abilities.
Okay. I'm sure there's a ton more for us to learn, so I won't go through every question I have with everyone here. But I believe that the community still wants to see this project go through. I still think that we want a sports complex. I think we still want an aquatics center that has been talked about. I think those two things were very, very popular and a big reason that the voters supported it with the significance that they did. So my advice would be, or my wish would be, that we go forward as soon as possible once we know what $5 million capped can generate from bond council and what is wise. I still, you know, you want to move fast, but a feasibility study is probably accurate. I mean, that's probably well thought out to do. But I want to see that planned out and a timeline for that. I would prefer that we look for somebody that's going to operate the sports complex and the entire facility, the existing fields and all of those things that we've talked about, to keep it easy for people to use. But I would support moving quickly on all of it. So thank you.
One thing we heard in terms of the operator and speaking to other jurisdictions is, well, and we have limitations in the state of Nebraska on how we can bid projects. One example we were shown, it's actually a city in North Carolina, similarly sized, about 60,000 population. They own about 400 acres. They're doing a sports complex plus support residential and commercial. Feedback they got from other jurisdictions was, do your design-build contracts like you normally would as a public entity, but get that operator under contract before the design is complete and before construction starts so that the operator can give input and advice to the architects and engineers because sometimes they don't always think about logistics. And the example that was given to us was a facility that is a great big facility with a conference center and basketball courts and recreational facilities, and they can't open it for just one of those functions alone. They have to open the entire building because of the way it's designed. And so if you think about heating and air conditioning costs, you think about manpower that ups their, that increases their operating costs. So it made a lot of sense to us that we could go forward with design, engineering, construction as we normally would, and then just make sure we're doing that RFP for the operator while that process, when that process starts and get them on board early.
Just looking at from 30,000 feet here, I don't see a $5 million cap being a dealbreaker at all. I think that's still plenty of revenue coming in to make this a very successful venture. So that doesn't bother me. But I have to have the base, I have to ask the basic of all basic questions because in my mind here, but for Woodsonia applying and getting that application approved and all the work we've done, but for that, we would not have a Good Life District. If Woodsonia should decide that they, this is not going to work for them, it's not going to do exactly what they wanted, and they decided to pull out, do we still have a Good Life District?
Yes. Yeah. Now that you've adopted, now that the voters have approved the program and we've adopted the program, it exists there. It would shift who does a lot of the reporting, how that process happens. The general obligations of the program remain the same, that we do that transformational work for the city, that we use that revenue in a certain way. But it does allow the flexibility for people to change their roles and change their scope, expand or contract as needed. So the ability to do those course corrections to help adapt to those, they're all still the same there. And your rights and remedies, the ability to do the application or the RFP or to spend the money directly, those all stay the same. So we'll just, it'll take some flexibility, it'll take some adjustments here and there for each of us to fit into those new roles, but that ability to go forward is still there.
Okay. So if they're, they say they don't want to play anymore, we can still make this happen. It may, it's going to be maybe different. It may not be as big, may not go as fast. What's the total of yours again on this? Was it 25?
30.
30. So we've got $150 million potential. And I got to go back and ask the clarifying question on the existing businesses that are generating income, but then any new businesses, there's a 50/50 split. What was, so all the businesses that were, that are there now, as of that date, they're considered existing businesses that would go toward?
Well, those were the changes in, that Carrie referenced in terms of relocated or additional businesses, new locations. Woodsonia believes, my understanding is Woodsonia believes that that language actually helps them because, as you recall, a number of those businesses existed, but then they were relocated and then relocated to a new, completely new location.
In the mall you're talking about.
Exactly, in the mall. And also, it's, there's a 40-mile parameter, so within 40 miles. So they believe that they'll be, that the sales tax revenue from some of those businesses that were relocated at the mall will sit on top, will come in on top of the $5 million cap. The very complicated formula, that's probably part of the reason why they're trying to still figure out what the law says.
Okay, so the existing businesses can still generate money on top of the $5 million cap, but then new businesses, there'll be a 50/50 split?
Outside of the 5, in addition to the $5 million cap.
Okay, so the new businesses would be like Chick-fil-A, Jersey Mike's, all that whole development, Target. Well, Target too.
Target?
Target too. Target would be a new business. So all of that would be a 50/50 split, which still should generate some good revenue, really should. I mean, so it's not, it doesn't sound as ominous as it appears, but it's really, to me, is Woodsonia going to play ball or not? And I know they're trying to sort all that out, and where's that all going to fit? If that doesn't work out, we still have options to go forward, and that's important. Now, there were still some requirements that a certain amount of revenue was brought in from out of state. That was a 20%, something like that sticks in my mind. Is that still involved in this whole thing?
Yep. For our type of district, the transformational benchmarks and the spending benchmarks did not change. So those big goals for how much money we have to invest, those are all still intact. Just how we get there changed a bit, but big goals are still the same.
Okay. So it's not gloom and doom. I think it was just different. I'm still trying to wrap my mind around non-revenue projects. Housing obviously would not be. Is the sports complex considered revenue generating? What is going to fall under the category of revenue generating?
And it's wonderfully complicated, but the city's bucket, the government's bucket is different than a private developer's bucket. For us, we have a lot more of those expenditures that don't have to be revenue-producing. We have a lot more options. For a private developer, somebody who makes application, they have that 20% cap. So that could be everything from obvious things like non-revenue-producing housing to landscaping to, I mean, there's, there's a lot that will not count for revenue-producing for a private developer. If you think, not to oversimplify it, but what they build with the money, if it generates as much sales tax revenue as it pulls out, it's probably going to be revenue-producing. If it, if the return on investment isn't there, it's probably going to be in that 20%. So some of it may also, it depends on how much money an applicant may ask for. An applicant who asks for $10,000 is going to have a whole lot easier time clearing that than an applicant that asks for $100 million. So it will take a lot of work, no matter what, to analyze each application, see what counts, what doesn't count, what those eligible expenses are. There isn't really a one-size-fits-all approach, but that's one of the things any private developer will have to really consider is, can they clear that formula or not? That formula does not apply to the city. So even if a basketball court doesn't generate a lot of sales tax, we still have those options available, which is why just the structure of it may change. What, I mean, whether we spend the money or a private developer spends the money, if that changes that, how much we can get out of that program and what we can do with it, it may advantage strategies that were previously indifferent to or disadvantaged.
So walk me through a what-if scenario. You threw out $100,000. Somebody generate, decides to build a commercial property that's going to generate some, or a business of some sort out there. How is that, I'm trying to understand, what's that 20% cap? Let's say they do a-
No more than 20% of their, so there's some definitions for what is and isn't an eligible expense. Out of that, no more than 20% of those expenses can be non-revenue-producing. So again, it very much will depend on what an application is there for, but in the end, what, 80% of what they spend on eligible costs has to generate revenue backwards. So again, it will, a difference between a one-building project and an entire area, that will look very different. That's probably part of why Woodsonia or any other developer looking to make application is going to have to go back to the drawing board and do that math, recalculate their expenses, what is and isn't eligible. It's complicated. Not a barrier, just, it just forces them to go back in and redo that math and reevaluate what they spend where.
Just again, is there any metrics that measure this 20% additional increase in out-of-state visits or whatever it takes? I mean, how, is that part of this at all, how they even know if that's occurred?
But most of that happened during the initial creation of the Good Life District. That was part of what Department of Economic Development reviewed at that initial application was, would this transformational project accomplish those goals? So most, if not all of that work has already been done. We just have to live up to that transformational project there.
And I would concur with what Jack said. I think it's very clear that the community wants this sports complex. I think it's equally as important that the aquatics center, not just one swimming pool, not moving the Y from here to there. It's got to be bigger than that. We have something that really is going, needs to benefit this community in a much larger way than one swimming pool can. It needs to be planned well, managed well, and the community and outside, people will come to participate in that swimming pool. There's no doubt about it, especially if we're going to have competitions, that will be a very big thing for us. So those are important things that I think we need to continue to pursue. I don't know what limit, what timeline we give Woodsonia to get their plan together, but I mean, it can't take months for them to come up with a plan because they already know what they, where they were going, but they know where they need to adjust. So I don't think this is something that we need to give them through September to come up with. I think it's, there's got to be a reasonable period of time where you say, this is a reasonable time. I don't know what that is. I don't know four weeks or six weeks or eight weeks is reasonable. But I know that they have all the framework together for what they were going to do, and now they just have to reshift and see where they, what tweaks they need to make. But I don't, I don't know what that timeframe is, but I don't think it's open-ended. I don't think we can wait forever because there are other things we have. We have other options, as we've already talked about tonight.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Of the Good Life Districts that the Nebraska has created, I can count them on one hand. All of them, except for one, are in the Omaha metro area. The one in Grand Island is the one that is not in the Omaha metro area at this time. I'll go back to the $5 million a year for 30 years, there's $150 million of state sales tax that would have went to Lincoln but for the Good Life District. I am grateful for that investment, plus half of the new, because it, the $5 million was part of half of the existing. And so I am grateful for the opportunity to invest that 150-plus million into the Grand Island community at a time when we are growing in so many ways. We have activities all over this community that are just phenomenal. And this is just one more opportunity to create this transformational project and do something else phenomenal. The state is going to want to have some return on their investments, so I understand the transformational project, but we can do it. And this is just a great opportunity, even as LB 707 puts it. So I'm looking forward for the opportunities. I'm, I think that we need to move faster rather than slower. I don't want the next legislature to have a chance to change it again. And so I think those opportunities, I just, right now, I don't know what they're going to be. I want to see what they are, and then I can certainly make decisions based on what's in front of us.
Mr. Still.
Thank you, Mr. I have a couple of comments and some questions. What do we do with the money that's collected since like last July or August? It sounds like that's in our bucket, but after, in a few months, it'll, I'll be going to state, to the state.
The state will then turn around and give us back some of that money, so I don't know exactly how Mr. Brown will structure that, but in essence, that money that's there now will be, that new money will be added to it. So we don't lose that existing money we've collected.
We can keep it?
Yep. Yeah, so it'll just change how the money gets to us.
And technically, under the LB 707, they, the legislature granted you the authority to enact an additional occupation tax on top of the state's full 5.5%. So when that ordinance comes back to you, I'm, I think staff is of a single mind that our recommendation will be to rescind and do away with the occupation tax, but that is an option available to City Council, should they choose to do that.
How much money have we collected since the inception?
Approximately four-
Four million.
Four million?
Yep.
Four million? That's a, that's a good bucket there. My other question is, do we have any liability to the people of Grand Island for the last election? I mean, we made a lot of promises that we're going to have Good Life Districts all over town, and we were going to do this, and we were going to do that. I just want to know if the voters can come against our council and against us for not following that election?
So the election authorized you to create the Good Life District program, which you've already done. So you've already fulfilled your voter mandate, for lack of better words. It will be a living and breathing document throughout the life of this as everything adjusts. We have obligations to adjust to the legislature, and that's what you're doing here. In the end, even this legislation doesn't stop us from fulfilling those promises to the voters that we will do transformational things with the revenue that the state has given up, just shifts and changes exactly how much and how it has to get spent. And again, requires those course corrections, but doesn't, it does not eliminate our ability to fulfill those and honor the goals of your program ordinance. So that all stays intact.
Okay. I guess where I'm coming from is, I want to be transparent with the voters of Grand Island, and I want them to see that it's not our doing, we're just following the changes in the state law. I don't want to have any repercussions or receive any phone calls. Why, you voted this way, and why did you do that?
Yep. We're at the mercy of the legislature, as I think as Mr. Sheard pointed out, the legislature giveth and they taketh away, and we have our obligations to do those, to do those changes. Cities can only do what the legislature tells us we can do. We're creatures of the state, and so that will always be with any ordinance you pass, any law you put into place. It's always subject to change or changes in the law. Try to minimize those impacts as much as possible, but the legislature does what the legislature would like to do.
I guess in closing, I really would support the sports complex, and I'd like to see us proceed with that. I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that was presented to us, and I think we need to continue carrying the ball to fulfillment.
Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you. I think the voters were really clear when they voted for it that they really wanted a transformational project. And I agree with everybody. I think the sports complex and the aquatic center especially are two things that we really, we really have to find a way to deliver on that for everybody. I think it's totally reasonable with the recent change and the complexity of some of this, that Woodsonia might need a little time to evaluate, but we can't get dragged into an extended paralysis with this. I think sometime, you know, by the end of the summer, we got to know what way we're going. If they want to keep it in or withdraw it, then we have to go the RFP route, and what other options we have. But we ultimately have to find a way to deliver on it. And obviously, anything that we would do, Laura, you mentioned we have to do some financing. There might be a little time that needed to research that as well with the changes here. How long of a time period do you think they would want? Like, how many months do you think we need to?
In terms of researching the financing?
Yeah, correct.
We, they'd actually done that- We, they'd actually done that analysis during the legislative session. But I, I would say we could move forward whenever the council is ready to move forward.
Okay. And I, I would recommend, I know everyone might need a little time to research this as well, but I'd say just a very reasonable, small amount of time. And then we need to find a direction to move forward would be my, my input as well. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
I agree with Mr. O'Neil. I think we need to move and we need to give Woodsonia some kind of deadline to see if they're even interested or not anymore and what their options are, what they'd say to us. And I think we need to get that sports complex and Aquatic Center started.
I think we all had some heartburn waiting to see where the legislature would land. But in the end, I concur with Mr. Hossi. The state has given us an incredible opportunity. Even though they modified it somewhat, it's still an incredible opportunity. Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Thank you, Mrs. McElhoun. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 7A through M, with the exception of B? Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A through M with the exception of B.
Mr. Hossi.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Consent agenda item 7B, approving payment of claims for the period of May 28, 2025 through June 10, 2025, in the total amount of $3,588,911.21. I don't think we have a presenter, so we're just going to proceed and see if we have him. Mr. Lanfair, you're going to make-
I move that we approve it for the sake of discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair and Mr. O'Neil.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll now do discussion. Mr. Lanfair, did you wish to be heard?
Yes, I, uh-
Please proceed.
I apologize to the board for taking up your time for my old untrusting, suspicious nature. I do read all the claims, believe it or not. I'm not crazy. But there was one for $444 for a Hilton Hotel in Baltimore. Now, I know if someone was in Baltimore, they had transportation, meals. I'd like to know who that was at, why they were there, and what was the total cost to sending there?
So councilmember, that was myself and our grant, right, grants manager, Libby Finicario. We both attended an ICMA conference. ICMA threw a, it was on economic mobility and opportunity and development. ICMA and the Gates Foundation fully funded the conference, so there was no registration fee. So the only thing that the city had to pay was the transportation and the hotel. And then the hotel had a discounted rate for attendees. But it was a three-day conference in Baltimore. We came back with a number of ideas for new city initiatives for economic mobility and, and development within the city and grants that we intend to apply for.
Okay. Like I say, I'm old, untrusting anymore.
Understandable.
And I do look at the claims, so that's very good.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Council, as I mentioned, we're going to move 9A before the public hearings. 9A, presentation on Nebraska State Fair Heartland Event Center parking lighting improvements anticipated funding request. Good evening, Mrs. Parr. Please proceed.
So much, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening for, for you and for City Administrator and the entire council. Thank you for your time. You have a full agenda tonight, so I'm going to make good use of your time. I'm going to give you a little jazz hands here because we are presenting and we're excited about that. F5. Look at there. My tips worked well. Thank you for that. This photo, you may have seen it before. This- This photo has become increasingly popular for us, and it was very valuable for the state fair, to be honest. It certainly helped us illustrate some of the challenges that we have seen at Foner Park Campus in the past. So hopefully, this is soon to be well far in the past, this image that you're seeing here. I do want to talk to you a little bit about the campus. It's a 365-day campus. It's not the Nebraska State Fair campus. It's Foner Park Campus. And there are a number of stakeholders there, including the city, of course, with the Field House, as well as the Heartland Event Center. Foner Park, of course, is owner-operator of that campus. Grand Island Casino Resort is a newer partner on campus, a newer stakeholder, that we like to call them. And then, of course, the Nebraska State Fair. And Group Venue Works in there with the Heartland Event Center, of course. So we're starting to compile data on attendees and looking to be able to tell you how many people attend Foner Park Campus each year. Some of that data is coming in, in great waves. We can certainly say that over 1 million visitors came to campus in 2023, as well as in 2024. Actually, with some new information that we just got today from Grand Island Casino Resort, as well as from Kyler at Venue Works, we are beyond 1.6 million people visiting Foner Park Campus in '23 and well beyond 1.4 million people visiting Foner Park Campus in 2024. So certainly, that illustrates to you the amount of visitors, about, of traffic that we see on campus in a given calendar year, increasing as we speak. 4.5 million of those visitors can be attributed to the state fair since being established in Grand Island in 2010. Last year's state fair attendance alone was 311,000 and, I'm sorry, 314,000 last year. The year before, 2023, was 311,000. Other ways that we make up the over a million people on campus include Gilka livestock shows. Established about 2012, Gilka has had more than 85 livestock shows on Foner Park Campus to date. The Exarban Stock Show came on campus in 2017. And about 73%, 73% of those attendees and exhibitors are from out-of-state. So that's our biggest draw from out-of-state between Gilka livestock shows and the Exarban Stock Show. Thankful for the numbers that Heartland Event Center was able to provide to us today and look forward to seeing that continue to grow moving forward. Grand Island Casino Resort also provided estimates and certainly is making a big impact on campus as well as throughout our community. And of course, the Foner Park Live Race season is very impactful, especially February through May. A little video for you here.
It's in 2019, and there was a great photo of vendors going down kayak in front of the barn, which unfortunately never wanted to be again.
It was the flood heard around the state. Outdoor concerts rushed inside and guest kayakers floating down Main Street at the Nebraska State Fair.
But those types of things just further illustrated the need to build on the foundation that Foner Park had.
It led to a formal funding request from the American Rescue Plan Act. And that request was granted, a tune of $20 million and a two-phase project. In the past year, the state fair and its Foner Park Campus parkers have worked with Olson to give the grounds a wider facelift, including the recreating of the Foner Park infield and closing a ditch near the barns and installing brand-new underground detention systems to hold stormwater. All this through what's already been a busy 2025 on the grounds.
It's a little glimpse of what's happening these days on campus. We're going to take one quick step backwards and talk to you a little bit about how that came about.
Good evening, Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor. In 2021, the Nebraska State Fair, State Fair Foundation, City of Grand Island, Community Redevelopment Authority, Foner Park, of course, and other community leaders undertook a strategic plan for a master plan for the Foner Park Campus. This master plan development was coordinated by a national firm that has significant experience and expertise in this area. The firm of Populus, excuse me there for a minute. With the development of this plan, the state of, the Nebraska State Fair was very well positioned to submit an application to the state of Nebraska for the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan funding. The original grant application was for $27 million. And this doll, these dollars were to come from three different pots of money. Those pots of money being in the environmental tourism and shovel-ready programs. You may recall back at that time, one of the elements of the shovel-ready is that all of the background work needed to be done so that grantees were able to move forward in a timely fashion, given that most of the work had to be done before, had to be under contract before 2024. So there's a very tight timeframe for the projects to be considered. The grant application, as we mentioned, was $27 million. The award was $20 million. So because of that, we knew that there was going to, there was a need for value engineering and to consider areas that could be modified. To help us with these modifications was Brian Frederickson from Olson. And Brian is going to walk you through some of the enhancements because of the $20 million that has been invested and will be invested on the Foner Park Campus right here in Grand Island. Brian?
Hello, Mr. Frederickson. Glad you're here tonight.
All right, thank you. So we're going to talk just about kind of overview of the ARPA project. As Cindy mentioned, that the project was set up in two phases. Phase one was completed mostly last year. We still have a little bit of work to do. And that really focused on the northeast portion of campus. We regraded the interior, the training track for, for better drainage, as well as doing some storm sewer improvements in some parking areas up in that portion as well. Part of that also included some storm sewer improvements on the north side of the Heartland Event Center. If you recall, some of the flooding that happens around the Welcome Center and the Nebraska Building, that has all been hopefully taken care of. I know some of the rains that we've had in the past, it has been quite the improvement out there. Phase two of the project, what we're going through now, that has to be completed by the end of next year, per the ARPA contract. Right now, the big focus is the south side of the Heartland Event Center. If you've been out there recently, you've seen probably the mess that we've got. And we'll talk a little more about that in detail here in a minute. Moving forward, after the state fair and Exarban, we want to move to the east side of campus, kind of the stable area. We'll be doing some paving and lighting improvements over there as well. And then come spring of next year, we will move over to the west side of campus and the northwest parking lot to do improvements out there for, for parking and lighting.
Talk just quickly, you all are already aware certainly of the tourism impact that Foner Park Campus brings to the Grand Island community. In 2023, Grand Island was ranked 22nd nationally for economic growth, 3rd for core economic indicators, and 11th for strength among 384 U.S. metro areas. Your strategic investment, the city, your strategic investment and your can-do attitude have made tourism a vital component of Grand Island and the ongoing developments that are, are happening here in our community. Investing in infrastructure is important. The fair, the state fair specifically, has been intentional to put back into the Foner Park Campus across the years. This will be the 16th state fair in Grand Island, and so 15th year, 16th fair is how we keep track of that, or how we do that math. Over a million dollars each of the last two years, the state fair has put back into the campus directly as far as capital improvements. This year, the state fair board approved $450,000. So just in three years, $2, $2.5 million in capital investment by the state fair. In addition to that capital, that effort from capital, there's been also operational improvements, continuing to make our campus a safe and welcoming environment. State fair, $7.7 million invested in equipment and fixtures. Some of that includes a sidewalk along Sully Park Road, Daktronics sign on South Locust Street, a grounds-wide PA system, security cameras and video storage, light poles and power in the west parking lot, hand washing stations, barn bar pavements, wireless internet enhancements and ADA door repairs. $15 million in completed building improvements. Just going on with that list includes bleachers and baby-changing tables, added power in the expo center, grass seed, turf and sod in the, in the east side of grounds, bridges to access areas where there is standing water and/or ditches for the standing water. LED screens, all of the new barns, the Sheep Barn, Five Points Bank Arena, Cattle Barn, and Aurora Co-op Pavilion, originally outfitted with large LED screens, have now been replaced. Streaming capabilities, pins, panels, chutes, plumbing and faucets, as well as machinery like scrubbers, skid steers, telehandlers, brooms, skid loaders, harrows. All of those things are used on, on the campus, either for the Nebraska State, for the Nebraska State Fair, but many of them also are used throughout the year for those Gilka livestock shows and/or other events that Foner Park brings to campus. Brian's going to talk to you a little bit about the parking.
All right, so a couple of different things here, the different areas throughout campus. As I mentioned before, the south side of the Heartland Event Center is what's being tore up right now. All that asphalt out there is getting removed, and the, the parking lot is getting regraded, getting brand-new seven-inch concrete pavement across it. Some of the improvements out there is a multitude of underground storage systems. There's going to be inlets all over that to help get the water from the top of the concrete underneath the ground. We'll touch a little more, but there are underground detention systems out there that have a water quality impact with it as well. We did look at changing the direction of the parking on-site and make it more diagonal to help improve efficiency out there. Moving to the west side of the, the parking lot, regrading those parking lots, defining drive lanes better for better parking efficiency, and adding a storm sewer system out there to help alleviate that water out there as well. And then the northwest parking lot, that one's currently kind of going through a few renditions, but that one is going to look to be paved here in next year as well. Clean water, the underground detention, which you can see right there, there's two of those on campus. One of them was installed last year on the west side of the animal buildings. What those do is all the storm water that leaves the campus or leaves that parking lot enters that structure here. This one is in the southeast corner. It was done this last spring of the south campus. Basically, it's a, it's a large filtration system. That entire structure will fill up to a certain degree before it outlets. There's a new outlet pipe that goes to the Wood River. So currently, the storm sewer, before, the storm sewer water from this parking lot entered the city's storm sewer system on Sully Park Road. We have given it its own designated outlet with this, with this project to help alleviate some of the, the overload on, on the city's system. Upstream of these detention cells, there's solid removal basins. So any type of debris that we get flowing down into our storm sewer that get washes in, it'll hit those structures first, they'll be filtered out. And those have, there's a maintenance portion of those, they'll be cleaned out every so often whenever they get full. Just helping us try to get the water cleaner before it hits these underground detention cells and then initially, finally, to the, to the Wood River. On the west parking lot, we will be putting in some detention cells to help clean the water as it flows off the site, as well as help detain some of those larger storm events. Also part of the project, the state fair was able to use their ARPA funds to purchase a street sweeper for the site. This will be used across campus as needed to help obviously get the parking lots clean. The more we get picked up above is the less that we have down below. Inviting atmosphere. Also part of the project is some, some new landscaping out there. On the south side of the Heartland Event Center, there'll be new parking lot lighting. These will be energy efficient, they'll be set up to dim when not in use, and then when someone walks or drives through, they all turn back on. The, what we call the pink rock area, the rocks on the west side or the east side of the cattle barns, they will be getting replaced with seating, raised seating walls, shade structures, plantings, grass irrigation system, so more of an inviting, an inviting atmosphere there for people. And one of the things that people have mentioned in the past is the lack of seating out here, so we're trying to take care of that. Also, we're going to add in festoon lighting, kind of like what you see downtown Grand Island. And as part of that will be temporary pole braces that will have, help hold the festoon lighting up, and they'll also have seating around the bottom of them, so during events there will be more seating for people. And then moving towards the east side of campus, also additional festoon lighting, better, uh, street, street lighting, more green spaces, and then adding trees along what they call Cowboy Way to help provide some shade during the, the hot summer months as well.
Looks like Mr. O'Neill has a question.
Actually, this is a question for you and maybe Keith as well. So you, you mentioned a lot of the storm sewer improvements over there. And on Foner Park Road, I, I believe it connects, there's like a large ditch there that I think drains out to the, the Wood River, if that's correct? I, I, I live very close there, I'm very familiar with the water issues in that area. I assume you guys, so this will push a lot of capacity to that that was going to the city's system before, correct?
Actually, to be honest, I don't know how much in the northeast corner of the campus that went to that large ditch made it there. It was pretty flat, it all kind of sat. So we didn't, we did create a detention cell in that corner to help hold the large runoff, but then we did pipe it across the road, built a new structure on that side, so there is a little bit more water going through that, as well as on the north side of the Heartland Event Center.
And, and they all feel like there's adequate, adequate capacity to handle the extra load from that water coming into here, right? Just want to make sure, but, thank you.
Excellent. I'm going to bring up two State Fair Board members who are going to help us close out this presentation. Tom Shellpepper from Stanton, Nebraska, is going to speak first. He's a vice chair of the Nebraska State Fair Board. And Boyd Strope is the chair of the Fair Board. He will come up after Tom.
Welcome, Mr. Shellpepper.
Good evening, Mayor Steele, City Council. Over the last couple of years, the, uh, sorry. Over the last couple of years, the Foner Park campus stakeholders have really worked to improve the grounds with the help of the twenty million dollars ARPA money. We have the proven ability to draw people to this city, and that's what the facilities we have now. Now, if we upgrade the facilities, that number is open-ended. I mean, if we're bringing a million people now, just think what we can do in the future. While the Nebraska State Fair and the campus partners have provided countless resources, we feel it's important for the city to participate with the improvements that benefit the entire campus. We understand the request and all that it entails, but believe this is a true investment into the campus that serves your customers three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let Chris do a little talking about that by video here.
Big communication and cohesion is imperative on here because there are so many people that, I don't know, they have their tentacles, they have their businesses right here on the Foner Park campus.
Now we're on to the south parking lot. Our crews continue phase two of the project. It features good paving of the lot, but also adding some concrete and sewer work. Fair goers will also notice new lighting at the project's end, but right now, it's a big heating pile of construction.
Well, I'd hate to take Jamie Carr's expression of inconvenience for the sake of progress, but that's been the fact, and we are looking at the progress right now as a result of the work.
When the State Fair returns in August, the project might not be fully complete, but those behind the effort, those of the fair goers, will certainly notice the difference.
You know, a lot of things that we do, as well as underground, you can't see it. Having something out here today with a new lighting in the parking lot, not seeing the water it is creating, because when the project's all said and done, I can come out here and actually officially see.
I hope it rains at least once during State Fair so that we can see there's not water standing in and around, you know, the, the sheep barn or Five Points Arena or Tompkins Delph Cattle Barn, but also up here around the Welcome Center, that is a huge pain point, has been in the past for State Fair.
All right, then that last slide, or this is the last slide, and you have an updated version of this. This slide, when we were reviewing for our final presentation today, we did find an error in there. So we, we took it down by a hundred thousand as far as projects that directly impact city-owned facilities like the Heartland Event Center. The work that we're asking for here, the support for the work that we're asking for here is all south of that Heartland Event Center and certainly impactful to the events and activities that take place there. And with that, I would like to bring up Boyd Strope, our final presenter.
Hello, Mr. Strope.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and administration. I'm Boyd Strope from O'Neill, Nebraska. I'm an attorney up there, don't hold that against me. I know you want to get city council meetings over with. I've represented cities and villages for over forty-five years, and meetings can get kind of long sometimes. This is my fifth year as board chairman. Going to talk, we've thrown a lot of information at you, going to talk a little bit about the relationships. When I first came on, you think about the State Fair Board, and I quickly learned that there are many, as you guys already know, many relationships out there on that campus. Two of the main ones are, of course, are Foner and Nebraska State Fair Board. Chris has done an excellent job of representing Foner. Jamie has done an excellent job of representing the Fair Board, and there's always differences, but that working relationship, from my personal observation, has just increased so much over the years. It's, it's a pleasure now to see, and that allows us to make progress. Mayor Steele and Administrator Laura have been willing to meet with us on matters. And I bring that up because the partnerships out there just seem to be growing, and we, we just want to keep those growing as they have been in the past. The way that I view this, if one Foner partner does something to benefit that campus, it benefits all of the partners, some larger, some smaller, but that's the way I view it, and I think it's very important. Nebraska State Fair, as you've heard, thankfully had their master plan in place with the help of the community. That got us twenty million. And so we have done a majority of improvements out there that approve everybody's attendance three hundred and sixty-five days of the year when, when they're out there, without a doubt. And so we are now asking the city for money, I know you get lots of requests for that, to kind of finish some things up here and help us out. The Heartland Event Center, where you're directly involved, excuse me, the, those attendees use all the improvements that we're making, not just the driveway that goes down there to the Heartland Event Center. They're using that whole parking lot. They're going to have that better parking experience. The lighting out there gives them much better protection. The security cameras that have been placed out there gives those attendees much better protection. The, and the lighting is just not regular lighting, it's LED in many places now, and we know how that, it is such an improvement. Originally, original request was twenty-seven, we received twenty, and I believe, Mayor, at some point in time, there were some discussions with the city.
About seven.
About seven.
Seven, seven and a half.
Seven and a half. And through some engineering with Olsons and everybody cooperating, our request tonight or at this time would be, we've got that down to two point six million is what we would request from the city. As Jamie pointed out, I understand the guidelines that you need to go by for city-owned things are about one point five four million. But we would certainly appreciate the entire two-six. We've donated, we brought in a lot before, and that would certainly clear up everything for all the attendees out there. Welcome all of you to come to the State Fair for fun food and entertainment and see the improvements that hopefully you'll be funding with us out there. This year's theme is showcase your fair face, and we hope to see your faces there. We've thrown a lot of info at you tonight, thank you for your time, and any of us would be happy to answer any questions if you have any more.
Thank you, Mr. Strope.
Thank you.
Mr. Kotulak, would you like to present?
Thank you, welcome, Council. I'm not officially part of this presentation. I am impressed with the variety of which they provided information to all of the council. It was nice, it made it easy to absorb, easier to absorb for sure. I'm here, I don't want to use the word to emphasize, it seems a little too stern, I'm here to state rather, from my, my board, I'm carrying the message that this request comes from State Fair Park, not from Foner Park. Now, I say that, and I, I want to add a little more to that. Clearly, the State Fair, Nebraska State Fair has, have made a number of amendments or number of years since they've been here. Some of these are, would, would we have done them ourselves? Absolutely not. Have they enhanced our facility? Absolutely so, they have. And I don't want to go down about what we would have done or what we would not have done. Are there some asks in this two point six million that we are clamoring to have done? No. Are there some, are all of them something that would benefit Foner Park? I would say yes, there are. I just don't want the opinion to be that our board is abandoning this effort here tonight from the State Fair. That is not the case. I just want you to know, this is a request of the State Fair, and Foner Park does support it.
Thank you, sir.
Questions?
We'll get to that in a moment. I want to get Mr. Vavrecheck up here, too.
Thank you, Mayor Steele. Of course, your comments earlier about the Good Life District saying the state has created a tremendous opportunity for Grand Island. Gosh, just look back fifteen, eighteen years ago, the state of Nebraska did a tremendous opportunity that our communities embraced and, and changed the community in so many And, and also I think it's important to note that unlike what you're doing with the Good Life District where you have a plan and you decide everything that goes into two hundred acres, everything is going on the Foner Park campus. Our incremental decisions based on what it was maybe twenty years ago or thirty, so we're adding, there's adding different things and components to complement so many different things going on there. So the investment here is a sound one. And also, I think it's important to note, the, the ARPA money was the federal assistance that came out of the result of the COVID crisis, and there was a pot of federal dollars there at the state campus to determine where it would go. And I would just note that leadership is so important. And Terry Galloway led that charge. I couldn't believe what he was talking about doing, but with the executive director Lindsay Kepke of the Eighteen Sixty Eight Foundation, and then embraced by all the entities that are here today, went from twenty-seven million dollars, but then all of a sudden, other politics got involved in them, hey, how about me, how about me, came about state capital and twenty dollars, twenty million dollars resulted. And then, not to be understated, but a twenty million dollar investment on, on the campus probably would not have occurred without those dollars. So looking at the investment that's being asked, it's a portion and it will complement absolutely the Heartland Event Center. And when you look at what a deal, the Heartland Event Center, a twenty-five million dollar facility twenty-five years ago, was funded eighty percent by public donors. And when you look at all the improvements that have occurred on the State Fair campus, Foner Park, forty million dollars of investments of all those facilities was largely funded by the state. So we have inherited treasures that now we can leverage for economic development. So I'm all in on this recommendation, I'm just speaking personally, and, and also, I'm all in on any ways that we can maximize that campus to its fullest potential. And when you look, I don't want to be here necessarily five years from now and look back and see the campus as it is today. You know, it's kind of like an airplane, it takes a lot of dollars to fuel that baby up in the air. Well, you can't let off the gas or you're going to go down. And we can't afford that, we need to have that continued investment. And also, I would just champion the, the city council and the people to know that this investment is going to complement people, to where if you, if you have satisfied customers, they come back. Dissatisfied, no. We need to continue with satisfied customers that attend all the different events there. So I don't know why we haven't looked at necessarily recapturing state sales taxes for potential improvements on that site. I don't know why, if this Good Life District comes about, we wouldn't even consider expanding it to include additional acres for more ways to make this even more economic available. But also, I know just personally speaking, when the State Fair lost some exhibit space due to casinos usage of the Foner Park concourse, it's still, in my estimation, it needs exhibit space. And there's been discussions about some possible facilities that might be harmonious between everyone to once again leverage everything on that site. So this investment i- is, is really a, a good one because it will complement the Heartland Event Center, will complement everything there. But when you go ahead and look at that site, I mean, I don't know, and I know the operator from the Heartland Event Center here, I don't know how he could have had a concert this spring when the races are going on and the casinos going on, there isn't parking. And the only way you can go ahead and have more parking on that site is to go up. And where I initially kind of scoffed at the notion of a parking ramp or parking garage, I, I think it's time to be looking and futuristic of knowing this investment is just a portion of what we ought to be discussing, of how we can raise our city, but also complement the thing that's so unique about this fair. It has the most volunteer-based individuals of any fair in the United States. When you go there, each yellow clad person is a volunteer, and that's unique. And this investment will complement, in my estimation, to say all those hours are worthwhile and are necessary in the future, and I think it gives faith, it gives optimism and energy for that base to grow in the future. But finally, I would just say thank you for the city of Grand Island's continued devotion to new ideas, Mayor Steele's enthusiasm, your leadership, obviously. This investment is a portion of what can go ahead and raise our city, I think, into a greater height, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you, Mayor Steele.
Thank you, sir. And council members, we cannot take action tonight because our legal department needs to sort through what can be recommended to you because there are restrictions on how the city can spend its money. So we'll get back to you on that. I hope we can help. I hope we can. If you have ever read every Lewis Lamour novel, like I have, you know, you know that the cowboys always ride and fight for the brand. The brand on their cattle is their identity. Our brand, what we're known for throughout the state, what we're known for throughout the nation is the Foner Campus. That is our brand. Horse racing, the State Fair, the cattle shows that draw people from around the nation, and now the addition of the casino, those are all our brand. I hope we can be like the cowboys in the Lewis Lamour novels. We ride and we fight for the brand. Mr. Lanfair?
Lewis Lamour, really? I don't know, I'm, I'm impressed. As someone who can remember the State Fair in Lincoln in the nineteen-sixties, what you've got is incredible, and I support giving you money. I do have the strange question of the day, and I know it only comes from me. You presented what you're going to do at the moment. Jay Vavrecheck talked about a parking ramp. What is the plan after you've done all these things? I mean, it's been a work in progress all these years. What's the next step?
Yeah, there, there is a master plan, and thankfully, we were in the process of making that master plan, we all were. Mayor Steele, you were there, Chris was there, and some other reps from Foner Park. We, we have other buildings that would like to see go up on campus. State Fair's prior, State Fair Board has prioritized another exhibit building, for lack of a better name, Expo Two Point Oh. That would be something that would appeal to the Nebraska State Fair. Expo 2.0. That would be something that would appeal to the Nebraska State Fair. Of course, everybody has to agree to it, to let it happen, but there are other buildings in the works. A small animal pavilion would be something else that would be of interest to the State Fair specifically. Equine facilities would also help the State Fair and help the east side of campus, what the fair calls the Grand District, better match up to the rest of the facilities that were built in 2009, '10.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. O'Neil.
Just a couple of things I want to ask real quick. So, it's my understanding during the State Fair, a lot of times you guys have to set up additional wireless access and cameras, like temporarily, like set up every year and tear it down every year, correct? And now, a lot of this will include funds to have some of that permanently built in as some of the light poles?
Sure would like to pull fiber to those light poles and let it be more of a better connection that can support more security cameras. Shoot, I had those numbers. Eric from Computer Concepts, he tells me, I think we have about 15 cameras in the south parking lot right now. At the end of this, we would have about 50 or 65. It's significantly more cameras with this.
And this would make them permanent, not just temporary, like the?
Correct, yes.
Some have been, okay.
Yeah.
Glad to see stuff like that.
Yes, the cameras stay up. There do need to be some video recording services, and VRs, they call them, but yes, more security, better lighting, better layout of parking, as well as quite a few more security cameras to capture any of those instances that we might need to review.
And that could give you some potential cost savings, had to set up and tear it down every year as well?
Absolutely, yes. It would save on that. Yeah, would also save a bit on generators. We use a lot of generators on the, to support the commercial booths and the food stands for State Fair. So, there's some electrical, some power in this that would help save that way.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Nickerson.
Appreciate the presentation tonight. Jamie, you answered part of my questions that I was going to ask, and you've got a big campus, and it takes a lot of work, not just to create it, but you've got to keep it up. So, you answered one of the questions I was going to ask you about, how much are you investing in the campus? And you said something to the effect of about $1 million a year. You guys have been pouring back into that with, I'm assuming upkeep and other things that you need to do there?
Yeah, big, the capital investments, biggest in the last couple of years is probably those video screens, as far as one big project. But also sidewalks, the sidewalk along Stollie Park Road, the fair installed a few years ago. I'm so glad Jay spoke, and spoke about the 1868 Foundation. They certainly raised funds to put up the U.S. Foods Arena. So, it's not just State Fair putting money back into that campus, but the fair is intentional about it. It is part of our goals, our budgetary goals each year.
Okay. The rest requests that I'm seeing here, we're looking at anywhere from, one says 1.4 million, one says 1.5, and that said 1.6. But somewhere in there, that number's there. So, I know there's a number there. I'm very surprised, and I see it probably in the breakouts here, but the biggest chunk, almost 1.3 million, has to do with electrical communications and lighting.
Yes.
To me, that just blows my mind, that that's 1.3 million dollars worth of stuff.
It's a lot.
And I was going to ask Ryan, I don't see him here, but just trying to understand, where are all those costs? I mean, that's a heck of a lot of money for?
Yes. So, as part of the south parking lot there, and even off to the east, but mostly the south one, all the new light poles, the new lighting, we were pulling conduit for all the security items and the fiber that Jamie had mentioned. So, ARPA does not cover electrical items. It is underneath the State Revolving Fund Clean Water Act. So, any of these electrical items that we're putting up out there are not funded under the $20 million, which is where most of this ask is coming from. When Jamie mentioned the generators, we're also putting in, they're called underground handholds for the power. So, there'll be short power out there. So, right now, the only time that there's power available to vendors in that parking lot is during State Fair, when there's a generator out there. So, moving forward, all of these will have live power to them that can be used throughout the summer for any event that comes around to it. They can connect to these and use more. But yes, that is where most comes from, is the power stuff is not cheap. New transformers, new panels to feed all of these items is not a cheap endeavor, for sure.
Yeah, that just blew my mind. I see Ryan's coming in now, but just trying to understand the impact of that, because that's, you're right, of 1.5 million on the seat, I'm looking at 1.3. That's just in electrical and communication stuff. So, that's huge. And it's not covered by ARPA, so that's understandable. That helps clarify that. I appreciate the board members being here tonight, coming all the ways that you had to come. And the board chair did mention that there was an original, you know, we know what the original request was, seven and a half, and then it pared that down now to about 2.6. But we're looking at 1.5 or 1.6, whatever. What was that, where's that other million dollars that we were hoping for? I mean, that you were hoping for? There's something here.
From the 2.6 to the 1.5?
Yes.
Sir, yes, yes. So, we were hoping for 2.6, and Boyd mentioned still are, if that becomes possible. We were made aware that it was not possible, that projects needed to be specifically associated with a city-owned asset. So, we pared down, and that is the difference between those numbers.
Okay, so one, there is no 2.6 anymore. It won't qualify anyway. There's 2.6, it's just not going to qualify in the bucket that you're looking for.
We'll have legal examine that. I don't want to give a definitive answer tonight.
The projects that directly impact a city-owned facility would be the 1.535. But there is 2.6 million deficit overall for the projects that we hope to see complete at Foner Park.
Okay. Well, it's very impressive. I'm very impressed by the underground detention. I'd never even thought about that, never even, it's interesting. And in your picture, I don't know what all that white was. Was that rock or something that was being poured over? It's just an impressive?
Yeah, absolutely. So, what those are is that they're only a half round chamber. So, we pour, put a rock base underneath of them, so water can filter through. These basins go on top, then the water, then the rock is on top of the basins, help hold them in place. Those will all fill up with water, and then we have the concrete cap on top of them. So, yeah, that's white rock they were putting out there on top of it.
Impressive. I mean, it's, and that helps solve a major problem, I mean, out there, which is, where's the water going to go? Because it can't go all down the sewer or the ditch all the time. The other question I have, which is just, it's just more of a down-the-road type question, and we won't have an answer tonight, I'm sure. But as all these improvements are made, and the parking lot, and everything is beautiful, and we have wonderful parking for 30,000 guests that come on a Sunday, somewhere down the road, that's got to be replaced. Someone's got to maintain that broken concrete. Somebody's got to replace these things. Where is the funding mechanism for that, as you start having to look? I mean, it's great to get everything looking great today, but it's not going to look great 10 years from now. So, I hope that somewhere in the big picture, and it's not necessarily the city's problem, because this is a campus, we just talked about, there's five entities out there. This is something that needs to be maintained, and I hope that somewhere in all the planning, that there is planning made for periodic upkeep, because it's not one of those things that, oh, all of a sudden, we need $3 million to do this. It's got to be planned. I don't know what portion of ticket sales goes toward maintenance. I have no idea. I don't know how that all goes in to the formula. But it seems to me, and that's just the State Fair part there, again, the other arms that are involved there. Somewhere along the way, I hope that we're planning, once we've got everything looking beautiful, there's got to be a plan to make sure there's money available to keep that up. And again, that's, we're not going to find that answer tonight, but it needs to be in the big plan, because we see too many times, in the city, in example cities, we have neglected infrastructure, because we didn't plan how to replace it when it should be replaced, and then we're hit with a $70 million bill, and how do we do that? Hopefully, it's just proactive planning for everybody. Obviously, good things are happening in the State Fair and the Foner Campus, but we want to make sure there are funds available five years, 10 years, 15, 20 years from now, to make sure that is kept up. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown? Go ahead, Mr. Stroke.
One thing that we've done in the past few years and put a lot of time into is we now have cash reserve policies in place, and we have several million dollars in capital and operations, which hadn't been there before. So, it may sound a lot of money, but as you folks all know, when you go to build a project or maintain things, you need that backup there. So, I was very glad we got that in place, and it's been working out well. We adjust it yearly. And yearly, we decide on those different capital projects, and when the time comes, I'm sure that can be one of them. But we wouldn't be in that position without those policies. But I feel confident we can, I don't think it's just all our upkeep either. It's a whole, everybody uses it. But I think all of us will be in a better position to do that.
Yeah.
Planning for it.
That sounds like some wise planning, and it is. It's an entire campus. You're right. Those costs need to be shared to make sure it's kept up. I do want to just add one more thing. I'm impressed, and these are always the right things. The city's been doing this as well, but getting rid of asphalt, replacing it with concrete, that's the way you got to do things nowadays. And seven inches thick, good lord, that's going to hold a lot of weight. So.
That's definitely the goal, yes. That was one thing that we looked at, you know? And as you guys do projects as well, it's tough to pick between the two. You can save a dollar by using the asphalt, but usually, the lifespan's not there, what it was, and the maintenance is a little bit higher. So, yes, concrete was a very important portion to go this direction.
Super. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
I think all my questions were answered, but just to tell you, that's Crown Jewels and the State of Nebraska. You guys have built an awesome place out there, and we really appreciate it.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. Two things. One, I could have sworn I heard the State Fair Director ask for rain during the fair?
It's going to happen anyway. We might as well.
No, no, no. I guess now I'll wash my car sometimes during the fair and make sure you get your wish. The work is taking place now. We've seen it. It's looking great. You have a, what do we say here in the agenda, a potential anticipated funding request?
Yes.
You're probably anticipating that sooner rather than later.
We are, yes, sir, we are. We are at the point where items have been procured. It's, can we install them, or should we not install them? So, the funding is important, and time is of the essence.
This, yeah, this is a, this is urgent ask at this point. It's a, do we or don't we? We're waiting on us to make a decision?
That would sure be helpful to us.
Okay.
Yeah, to, and then, you know, to determine, yes, what might happen with the rest.
Okay.
Yeah, if the rest can happen or not, I guess, would be the appropriate answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you, all of the Foner and State Fair presenters. Thank you for being here this evening. We will now continue with our agenda, getting back to our regular agenda, public hearings, 8A, public hearing request from Danny Enterprises, Inc., DBA Sluggers, 707 West Anna Street, Grand Island, Nebraska, for an amendment to their current liquor license to add catering, a secondary license to their current Class C liquor license, to change to a Class CK liquor license. Mrs. Sis, oh, sorry, Mrs. Sis Narrows. I'm sorry, I stuttered.
That's okay. An application for a Class CK liquor license was filed with the Liquor Commission and received by the city on May 19th. A notice to general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on May 31st. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on May 21st, along with chapter four, City Code Alcoholic Beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code. Recommendation is to approve. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Brown?
I move we approve 2025-188.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second that we approve 2025-188.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8B, public hearing on acquisition of utility easement, 3515 West Old Potash Highway, Hornady Family Limited Partnership. Good evening. Please present for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a 20-foot easement to feed the new Kia site. The easement crosses two properties for the service, so this is the first of the two that are on the agenda tonight.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 2025-189.
And Mr. Brown?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8C, public hearing on acquisition of utility easement, 3961 Silver Road, Genuine Diesel, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a 20 by 20 easement to feed Genuine Diesel Service. Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Lanfair?
I move that we approve 2025-189.
190.
19.
Thank you. Mr. Conley?
I will second that motion.
Discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Public hearing on acquisition of utility easement, 3515 West Old Potash Highway, Melody Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the continuation of item 8B, that crosses into a second property, all to serve the new service at Kia. Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 2025-191.
Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Public hearing on acquisition of public utility and drainage easements in Millennial Estates Second Subdivision, Strofska Group Unlimited, LLC. Mr. Kurtz?
Good evening. So, this is for acquisition of a utility and a drainage easement in Millennial Estates. Strofska had originally planned for a development. They changed the sizes of the lots, so the easement had to be relocated slightly. So, this is for that new easement location.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Still?
25-192.
Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Public hearing on acquisition of public right-of-way for South Locust Street improvements, Foner Park Road, the Second Street Project Number 2021-P-6, Midwest Premier Investments, LLC, and Grand Island Apartments, LLC.
Yes, this is for acquisition of some right-of-way needed for the South Locust roadway improvement project that is currently under construction.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Still?
25-193.
And Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance Number 10020, consideration of vacation of utility easement, 111 West First Street. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we suspend the state's statutory rules.
Ordinance is?
Mr. O'Neil?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Schmitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a vacation of part of the existing utility easement that falls under where the expansion of the new Hall County Courthouse will go. So, we'll retain the part that still fits and vacate the other.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I move we approve ordinance 10,020.
Mr. Still? Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance Number 10,021, consideration of amendments to Chapter 40 of the Grand Island City Code relative to stormwater management. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. O'Neil?
I move to suspend the rules.
Mr. Lanfair? Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted. Motion adopted.
Mr. Kurtz, please present.
Yeah, so this is, we're requesting your approval for some modifications to Chapter 40. This does regard stormwater management in the city, and it reflects and brings us into compliance with changes to the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. We've kind of outlined a couple of the major modifications. One, right now, anything over one acre of disturbance requires a permit. We're modifying that to require anybody disturbing any area of size, so i.e. a house, which is considerably less than one acre, to fill out a city permit. It wouldn't necessarily be a national permit, but that allows us to know who's constructing where. So if there are issues with runoff off the site, we can, we can address those. This will be streamlined with our new permitting software that's currently rolling out. The Building Department is actually already using it. Public Works is going live, I think, next month, so that will be a good thing. Another one, the national permit requires 14-day inspections of sites. This does require a seven-day walkthrough, make sure all your stormwater pollution prevention devices are intact. So again, just bringing us into compliance with that. Number three, it provides for an accounting method for post-construction quality, water quality standards, and it allows for people to apply to use. We've developed a credit system, essentially accounting for this post-construction water quality issue. We're treating the water as it flows through town already, so we developed a system to account for that. And number four, it addresses allowing the city to enforce or essentially make people clean up water course that runs through their property. Of note, at a coming meeting, we will be bringing and asking for approval for a waiver-fine schedule addition, so that there would be some fines associated with some of these things that code enforcement can use to help gain compliance with these issues in the future. So that'll be something that will follow up this modification as well.
Motion is in order. Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 10,021.
Mr. Lanfair? Any discussion? Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. On that last bit, what would, can you give an example of what we would fine someone for?
So, again, this isn't directly asking for that fine waiver schedule change. Some of the issues that could be uncompliant would be trash in a stream, running through your property, trees that are falling into the stream, running through your property, discharges from a construction site. So contractors are supposed to control sediment on the site so it doesn't go into our storm sewer system and clog it up, so that we would have to spend money to go and clean it up. So if they're uncompliant with those type of things, that proposed change in the future would allow for some ramifications to encourage them to take care of those issues on their own. So, again, overall, it would help the city by not incurring those costs to essentially fix problems that they should be maintaining on their own, if that makes sense.
It does. I guess, clear up for me, is this anybody, or is this in relation to a build of some sort?
Well, in theory, it can be anybody.
Okay.
Now, whether you at your house are going to have illicit discharges into the storm sewer system, unless you're out changing the oil in your car and dumping it down the storm sewer, which, or dumping paint or whatever else down, I mean, that would be an example of a finable type of offense, but most of this is going to be big construction, negligence of that kind of work, and not so much any of us really being impacted by it.
Okay, that's the intent, right? That's what, that's what's coming, okay.
That's the majority of the intent, yes.
All right, thanks for clearing that up.
Mr. Nickerson?
My question was along the same line as Jack's, just trying to understand, is this affecting me as a homeowner? The answer is yes, it could, but in an extreme situation, oil or whatever. When changes like this are made, how are people notified? If you are changing something that somebody before didn't really have to get engaged in this, what now? What triggers them to know that they need to do this?
So a lot of these things are already, we're updating what is already there. So, again, the requirement doesn't necessarily specify the 14 days versus the seven days. That should all be notified or in their permit itself. So when a permit is developed, most of the contractors, for example, aren't developing their permit per se, they're hiring somebody to help them do that. But all of that, those factors are documented in that permit that is submitted to the state. We also are party to that as well. So as far as notification to the general public, again, we're not really adding anything that's of great change to what is already there. We're just better defining it in a way, if that makes sense.
Okay. So the people that this does affect and the changes, it's just basically a checklist. Is there, going through their permit now, saying, boom, you got to deal with this, too?
So anything over an acre is, this is already law. They already have to get a permit through the state. Nothing will really change other than maybe some of the details in that permit. The smaller, the smaller sites in town, in theory, they're already supposed to get that. It's my hope that with this new permitting system and all of those things in place, it'll be more streamlined to get compliance on that. So if those boxes aren't checked, maybe we would get to the point where we're initiating a building permit or whatnot, you know, to make sure that we're checking the box. Ultimately, the city will and can get audited by the state on these kind of things. So if we show that we have these measures in place, we'll be in compliance with those regulations.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
The last thing on our agenda is executive session to discuss strategy regarding purchase or sale price of real estate and discuss union negotiations. Mrs. Fisk, I understand that you want to give the council guidance on the type of motion.
Mayor, if you note in the memorandum, it looks like there was old language copied from a prior memo, so whoever makes the motion simply needs to make a motion to enter the, enter executive session for the purposes listed in the agenda description, rather than the Good Life District sample motion. So just a motion to enter into executive session, executive session for the protection of the public interest to discuss real estate negotiations and union negotiations.
Thank you. Council motion is in order. Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we go into executive session to discuss real estate and union negotiations.
Mr. Stilke? Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We are going into executive session at 8:59 PM.